And Manana Sizouas, many of God’s blessings. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being here this morning. I will call the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing and Historic Preservation to order. We will be hearing today on the agenda, the appointment of Cecilia E. Kraft for the Archaeological Alternate for the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board. We will also be hearing the appointment of Shelley V. Calvo, member to the Guam Visitors’ Bureau Board of Directors. Bill Number 82-33COR, which is an Act to Appropriate Funds from the Fiscal Year 2014 Fund Balance of the TAF, the Tourist Attraction Fund for the Payment of Operational Needs for the 2016 Festival of Pacific Arts Activities, Payments to the Employees’ Government of Guam Resulting from the CWA, the Competitive Wage Act, and to fund the balance payments due to law enforcement, is on the agenda. And the last bill that will be heard today is Bill Number 83-33COR, which is an Act to Appropriate Funds from the Hot Occupancy Tax Surplus, Hotel Occupancy Tax Hot Surplus Fund for the Payment of Capital Needs to Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, to the Guam Visitors’ Bureau’s Operational Funds, and the funding requirement for the Hagatna Restoration and Redevelopment, and also for PATA. We will start with the appointment of Cecilia E. Kraft, but I just want to go ahead and note for the record that we have met, based on statute, we have met the requirements for the five-day notice and the two-day notice, based on 5GCA Chapter 8 Subsection 8107. And I want to add for the listening audience, if anyone would like to give written testimony, they can do so by sending it to senator@tina munia barnes dot com or through facsimile at 472-3400. And we’ll go ahead and have the appointment for Ms. Cecilia E. Kraft first, and I’m hoping to see, is there anybody here to testify? Do you see the appointee here? Is there anyone here? Do we have the list? We have, in the audience, is it Jolie Liston, here to give support, no oral testimony, and also Boyd Dixon, who says you support the nomination? Say that? Yes, and submit a written testimony. Thank you. Would you like to say something on her behalf and come up before, or just the written testimony will suffice? Okay. If not, then Ms. Cecilia Kraft is you. I’d also, before you start, like to thank my vice chair for being with us, Acting Speaker BJ Cruz for being here this morning. Thank you. Also, I’d like to recognize the Board of Directors from GBB, who’s here, Mr. Im, thank you very much, and also Mr. Denite, General Manager, thank you for being here this morning. With that being said, you have the show. If you’d like to state your name for the record, what you’re here for, where you’re from, and if you support your nomination. Yes. Yes. Can you turn on the mic? Make sure the red light is on, and go ahead and pull the mic over to you, please.
Okay. My name is Cecilia E. Kraft, and I’m here to be nominated to the Archaeologist Alternate Position for the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board and the Guam Preservation Trust Board. I support my nomination. If I had been better prepared, I would have prepared a written testimony, because I’m not great at talking about myself, but I can give a brief statement on my background. I did go to school in Santa Rita and Agate, so I spent some of my formative years here on Guam, exploring the history, the archaeology of the island. I spent 13 years away from Guam, living in Hawaii. I got my bachelor’s degree from the University of Hawaii. I went on to work in Egypt, that’s where I started my archaeological field career. I was awarded my graduate degree in Egyptology and Archaeology from the University of Liverpool in England. I returned to Hawaii, where I was working for about two to three years, and was given the opportunity to come back to Guam. After, like I said, about 13 years away, came back to Guam to work on archaeological projects for the firm I was working for. And in 2012, they offered me the position to run our office out here, so I’ve been here permanently since 2012. And I really appreciate the opportunity to work in the historic preservation community on Guam. Like I said, I do have a background here, and so it’s of personal interest to me. I’m not sure if that’s how much I should go on, but that’s about it.
It’s great. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I’d like to yield to my vice speaker, if he has any comments for Ms. Cecilia.
What is the name of that company?
I’m sorry?
You say you’re here as the running the office?
Oh, the company, yes, it’s Garcia and Associates, or GONDA.
And they do archaeological digs?
It’s a natural and cultural consulting firm.
And since you’ve been back, what are the major projects that you’ve worked on?
We have a lot of projects, ranging from small, private-sector projects, for example, surveys for undeveloped lots, or for landowners who need to install a septic tank in their backyard, all the way to large, federal-sector projects. We’ve had projects on the Navy, at the Air Force. We recently completed a monitoring project on Anderson Air Force Base, for example. We’ve also had projects with the Guam Historic Resources Division. Last year, we worked with our architectural historian to complete a large survey of southern Guam. So we’ve had a wide range of projects.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Also joining us, ladies and gentlemen, this morning is Senator Tony Ada. Thank you for joining us. Senator, would you have any comments for Ms. Kraft?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for stepping up to the plate to volunteer. I thank the governor for sending your appointment down, and your interest in wanting to help Guam Preservation Trust, you know, as they’re celebrating their 25th year, there’s a lot of projects that have been happening. And I think the only question I’d like to ask you, if there is one thing that you’d like to see change or enhance to the Guam Preservation Trust, what would you like to share?
That’s a really great question. I think the Guam Preservation Trust is such a great organization already. I mean, the projects they do to increase awareness of historic preservation on Guam is commendable. I mean, I would say just keep doing what they’re doing, finding more historic resources that need preservation, expanding that effort.
Great. Well, I want to say thank you very much again for volunteering and stepping up to the plate. It’s exciting, they’ll probably have a full quorum and complete the discipline, if I’m not mistaken.
Hopefully.
I do know that Mr. Kenata, from the Preservation Trust, the executive director, said he would submit the written testimony in support of your nomination, and he was supposed to be here this morning, but has probably got caught up with the meeting. But I want to say thank you again, and I will have called your appointment to the Guam Preservation Trust publicly heard, and thank you again for being here, and thank you for your supporters who took the time to come out to submit written, and just to be here for your support. So, thank you very much. You have a wonderful day, and please be safe. I do know there’s a storm coming, so you’ve got to get ready for that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, is the appointment of Shelley V. Calvo, member to the Guam Visitors’ Bureau’s Board of Directors. I do know that there have been people who’ve signed up to testify on her behalf. I do know that the appointee is here, but before I call her up, I have a list of folks who would like to testify on her behalf. I do see, and I’m going to ask him to come up, I’ll yield to our signee, and have the former Senator Israel, please join us up here. Also joining us is Mr. John Nathan Denite, General Manager of GBB. Please join us. We do have the Board of Director, Mr. Im, who is here to support. Would you like to speak on her behalf, or just share your support? Okay. Mr. Renee Ramos was here earlier. I know you have written testimony. Would you like just read that written testimony, or just to show support? Okay. Also, we have Margaret Utori. Would you like to come up and read your support? Please come up. We also have K. Villan, I’m sorry, I don’t mean to, Villan, are you here to give just moral support? And, okay, thank you. And then we have, from the Filipino Club of Guam, FCG, Mr. Roy Adenai. You’re more than welcome to join us at the table. Thank you very much. And I do have several others. I’ll leave them for the next panel. I would ask that everybody, when they speak, go ahead and speak into the mic, and state your name for the record, if you’re here to, where you’re from, and who you represent, and if you’re here to support or oppose the appointee. So, Mr. Denite, if you can please forgive me, I would like to yield to our signee, and extend the invitation to Mr. Israel to speak first. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chairman, and Senator Ada. Please extend my regards to your father. My name is Alfred Israel, and I’m a resident of Tumon, and I’ve been a resident of Guam for the last 64 years, since 1951, before you were born. I’m here in support of the nomination of Mrs. Shelley Calvo for the position of a board member of the Guam Visitors’ Bureau. I’m of the sincere opinion that Mrs. Calvo will bring a needed insight into the deliberations of GBB because of her education and work experience. She graduated from one of the most prestigious women universities, the Assumption College, and her business and employment experience will bring a different insight in our tourist market. The bulk, the majority of our Japanese visitors are what is commonly known as coffee girls, very young, single girls on their first trip abroad, who come to Guam for romance and adventure. You can see them on their first day in the island with their sarong and a flower in their At night, they’re dressed to kill with their high heels, walking around Tumon streets, looking for something to do, and their only thing available for them is the globe. With Mrs. Calvo’s insight of the young women’s market, she will help in retaining this segment of the tourist market. Her skills and experience and expertise are needed at the GBB, and will help the old hogies at GBB attain its goals. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Senator, for your testimony. At this time, I’d ask that General Manager Denite, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, Senator Ada, former Senator Al Israel, thank you very much for allowing me to testify. Mrs. Calvo is a well-established entrepreneur that has a wealth of experience and knowledge that will no doubt contribute to the GBB Board. She’s a graduate of Assumption College with an AB in Interior Design degree, and has several certificates and diplomas in Business Management, Culinary Arts, and Computer Development. With several key management roles and as a former flight attendant, her leadership skills and understanding of the visitor industry will be assets in helping move the tourism to the next level. Furthermore, Mrs. Calvo is an active community member, involved in many civic and nonprofit activities that show this dining diva has a heart of gold. We appreciate that she is willing to volunteer her time to give back to our island through GBB, and help us reach our Tourism 2020 goals. Thank you again for this opportunity to support Mrs. Calvo’s appointment to the GBB Board of Directors. Bebe GBB and bebe Guam. Thank you very much. Susmaasi.
You’re very welcome. At this time, I’d go ahead and recognize Dr. Utori.
Thank you. Good morning, Senator Barnes and Senator Ada. As a chairperson of the Guam Homeless Coalition, I’m pleased to offer my testimony in support of Mrs. Shelley Calvo as a member of the Board of the Guam Visitors’ Bureau. I’ve been fortunate to work with Mrs. Calvo in my capacity as a member of the Guam Homeless Coalition when she was the chair of the GHC. The Guam Homeless Coalition is a collaborative organization with members from the government of Guam, private agencies, and nonprofit organizations. We are the local continuum of care in Guam, and Gura, as the collaborative applicant, oversees the homeless programs, shelters, and services. As the chair, Mrs. Calvo showed great dedication, passion, and commitment to our cause. She worked many hours with the GHC members to revitalize the coalition and to rally member organizations to become the vibrant coalition that it is today. As the chair, she was instrumental in attaining our nonprofit status, and a lot of people aren’t aware of that accomplishment. Prior to that, we did not have a nonprofit status. Prior to her tenure, the GHC was loosely organized with many well-meaning members. However, she infused a new drive, and through both the achievement of the nonprofit status and her ability to mobilize resources for fundraising, the coalition thrived, and it continues to thrive today. Her work in raising awareness and her work with community partners and donors garnered approximately $18,500 in only two years, which I feel is remarkable. Prior to her work, the GHC had minimal success in fundraising. She was strategic in her efforts and able to successfully reach out to businesses and others in the private sector to gain support for the GHC. During one of the annual point-in-time homeless counts, Mrs. Calvo and I were on a team in Hagatna together. And I really wanted to bring out this other part of Shelley, that I really want the public and the senators to be aware of. She really does have a heart of gold. We had to be out at 5:00 AM. She was tireless. She was just really energetic and very caring towards the homeless individuals and families that we met. Despite our early start times, she was still able to have one of the many organizations she’s affiliated with provide food for the volunteers that morning. She was so concerned we wouldn’t have enough food that she participated in making the food herself before coming in to help us at 5:00 AM. This is just a small example of her hard-working nature. The Guam Homeless Coalition is pleased to support Mrs. Calvo and is forever grateful for her time, passion, and commitment to the GHC. Her work is a testament to her love for the people of Guam, and her strengths will be an asset to the GBB. Thank you for your time and consideration of her nomination.
You’re very welcome, Doc. And if I could just ask you for your record, for the record, to just state your full name.
Oh, sorry. Dr. Margaret Utori Uchima. I’m Dean of the School of Nursing and Health Sciences at UOG, but I’m here in my role as the Chair of the Guam Homeless Coalition. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. Appreciate it. And Mr. Adenai?
Madam Chairman, Senator Tina Munya Barnes, Senator Anthony Ada. It is indeed a privilege and an honor to actually be here to speak on behalf of our nominee over here. But I’d just like to note that I’m actually speaking for two people over here, one on behalf of Dr. Melu Meligan, who was the former Vice President of the Filipino Community Guam, and myself as the immediate past president of the Filipino Community Guam. As a Guam civic leader, I offer my full endorsement of Mrs. Shelley Calvo’s confirmation as board member of Guam Visitors’ Bureau, or GBB, based on popular support from local members, and on the following consideration. The successful operation of GBB is contingent in quality management by stakeholders who have served similar government boards commissioned that require expertise and commitment to design programs and projects in addressing various issues and challenges unique to the island. A former board member of Hagatna Rehabilitation and Reconstruction Commission, Mrs. Calvo has built an impressive experience and work character, coupled with a strong grasp of the intricacies of developing Guam’s potential to attain a balance of economic stability and preservation of cultural heritage. Michelle Calvo has more than 15 years of private-sector marketing experience as owner and manager of various businesses such as Oxygen Salon and Spa, Drop Lounge, Masa Restaurant Lounge, Island Tribune, Club Manila, and La De Laude. Through her innovative ideas, new marketing strategies, and product emerged in the business landscape. Marketing is essential for tourism industry to attract visitors, investors, and developers. She encourages friends and relatives to explore new possibilities to improve their financial state. This entrepreneurial spirit, team spirit, is a powerful force to set in place a flexible, dynamic system that will take care of the island’s economic uncertainties. Equipped with business degrees and certifications in her trade, Calvo has established a name in the culinary and art writing. Her column Dining Diva graced a leading newspaper, Pacific Daily News, for more than five years. She has a compilation of her original recipes, all enticingly presented in a book called Cooking with the Diva, which is now one tourist attraction in the bookstand. Interestingly, interestingly unique, her work featured 40 influential women in Guam who she inspired to share their favorite recipes. She is currently the managing editor of the monthly publication Island Tribune, and continues to feel the pulse of the island, share her insight and nuggets of wisdom with the residents and tourists alike. Calvo’s leadership style is undeniably what defines her presence in the social, civic landscape, and qualifies her as an ambassador of character. She embodies integrity, respect, responsibility, sportsmanship, and servant leadership. She is a winner in almost all endeavors of life, but true champions do more than just win. A true leader is generous with her time, talent, and resources. She has served as president of the Capiseno Association Guam, chairperson of Guam Homeless Coalition, and member of the Guam America Alliance Club of the International. She has received numerous awards and citations for inspiring service projects, a well-respected speaker. She has recently invited as keynote speaker at the Guam America Alliance Club. On behalf of the many island residents and organizations who are recipients of Shelley’s Calvo’s generosity and mentorship, I would like to express our full support and well-wishes. We stand behind her vision of diversified tourism authority that would create and support policies that will enhance the industry and quality of life for our people. We highly encourage the Guam Legislature’s approval and confirmation of Mrs. Shelley’s Calvo as board members of Guam Visitors’ Bureau. To sum it all up, in four words, her charm, her generosity, and certainly her tenacity would certainly work at Guam Visitors’ Bureau. I humbly ask that you confirm her confirmation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adenai. And before I just miss this panel, Senator Ada, do you have any questions? I’d like to acknowledge the governor. At this time, before I call the next panel up, also, I’d just like to acknowledge the presence of our former governor, who’s in the audience, Governor Paul Calvo. Manana Sizouas, thank you so much for coming in and support of your daughter. You’re excused. Would you like to say a few words, Governor, or you’re just here for support?
I’m ready.
Also, before I call her husband up to speak, I want to share for the record that our office has received numerous calls in reference to the support of Mrs. Calvo. And I want to share, on behalf of the mayor and vice mayor of Baragada, they did call in and give a letter of written testimony in support of Andrew S. Leon Guerrero, former mayor of Baragada, Mr. Jesse Borah Palikin, Mr. James Castro, who is the municipal planning council member of Baragada, sends in his support. I also want to share with you that Mr. Monte Mesa sent in a written testimony, and the... Again, Dr. Maria Lourdes Tenorio Meligan has also sent in written testimony. I did receive a personal phone call this morning, ladies and gentlemen, and it was from the general manager of Tumon Sands Plaza, and she’d asked me to personally read her testimony on her behalf. She wanted to be here this morning, but shared that she had a meeting that she couldn’t get out of, and she felt that it was important to do so, and I’ll just read it for the record. It says, “Hafiday, Senator Munya Barnes, I am writing this letter in support of the appointment of Shelley Garcia Calvo to the Board of Directors of Guam Visitors’ Bureau. My name is Susan V. Friar, manager of Tumon Sands Plaza Shopping Mall. I have known Mrs. Calvo for over eight years as a business acquaintance and a friend. She has been proven to be a very caring, compassionate, and generous individual. She has been an active member of civic and nonprofit organizations, such as the Hagatna Restoration and Redevelopment Authority, the Guam Homeless Coalition, and the Filipino Community of Guam FCG, to name a few. As an entrepreneur, she is quite astute and exercises excellent judgment in planning and organizing all aspects of business endeavors. Lastly, she is a fashionista. I believe she would be an excellent representative to our island’s tourism industry,” and she says, “respectfully yours, Susan V. Friar, manager, Tumon Sands.” I also want to note that the chairman of the Guam Visitors’ Bureau is here. I didn’t see him walk in, Mr. Mark Baldega. I’ll go ahead and call him up at this time. To have a seat, please join us. Also, the husband of the appointee, Mr. Paul Calvo, I will call him up. And if I may... Paestis. Are you here for support, or would you like to submit? Please, come on up. Ladies and gentlemen, not very often do we get testimony also from very young adults in the community. And if I may, I’m going to ask, if I can call Mr. Calvo up to read a testimony from a young sophomore from the Academy of Our Lady of Guam, who shared her number, Savannah V. Garcia, and I felt that it was important that it be read into the record, because when you get the time for students in high school to take the time to write testimony, I think it’s important that it’s read. So, if I may, ask you, Mr. Calvo, to go ahead and read this. On behalf of Ms. Garcia, I would truly appreciate it. Please. And if anybody else wishes to speak this morning on the panel, they’re more than welcome to sign up with our committee staff, to your right, my left, and we will get you up here to speak. So, Mr. Calvo, I’ll go ahead and yield to the chairman, and have you, Mr. Baldega, speak first.
Hafiday, and thank you, Madam Chairperson. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I’ll be brief. The entire Board of Directors of the Guam Visitors’ Bureau, to a person, is highly supportive of... The entire Board of Directors of the Guam Visitors Bureau, to a person, is highly supportive of Ms. Calvo to join our board. Not only does she have, I won't repeat too much what's already been said, but not only does she have business background, great PR and marketing skills through the Dining Diva food and beverage experience, an entrepreneur, it brings such great strengths to the board, which is already filled with business people, but she also brings a woman's perspective, which frankly speaking is really lacking on the board of GVB. And so, we're very, very excited and appreciative of this nomination and can't say enough strongly enough how much we really support and recommend and appreciate her nomination to the board. That's all. Thank you. We look forward to having her. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Paestis?
Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of not just a good friend, but highly respected businesswoman in Guam. I've known Shelley for over two decades. I've watched her grow, not just as a person, but as a businessperson herself. I'm truly honored to be able to work with her in several business ventures. And she would be a great addition to the Guam Visitors Bureau, not just because she knows a lot about Guam, but she's well-traveled. And she has passion in helping people, which I think is a very good trait that a board member should have. Not a lot of people probably have known this, but Shelley Calvo is actually heading, or she headed the Guam Homeless Coalition, which helped a lot of people on Guam, and I can vouch for that. I've known how she goes out in the jungle, looking for people she can help out. And I can't, it'll take a whole day for me to be able to describe what kind of a person Shelley Calvo is, but in a nutshell, I highly recommend and support the nomination of Shelley Vargas Calvo in Guam Visitors Bureau. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I also would like to acknowledge the presence of the deputy general manager, former colleague, Senator Talatayui. Thank you for being here. And are you going to present oral testimony, or just for support? Sizos Massey, Mr. Calvo? And if you could read the student's letter first, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chairperson. Senator? Good morning, Madam Chairperson, and Senator Ada. Yes, I'll start with the letter that you just gave me from Savannah. Dear Senator Barnes, I am Savannah Vargas Garcia, and I would like to tell you about my mother, Shelley Vargas Calvo. I was supposed to be at the hearing to support her nomination to be a board of director for the Guam Visitors Bureau, but Mother does not want me to skip classes. I recently submitted a reflection paper for my Theology II class under Ms. Alcantara, Alcantara, and I want to share with you because it describes what kind of person my mother is. I quote, "My mother is my compass. She helps me and guides me in becoming a better person and making the right decisions because God, besides God, my mother virtually, spiritually finds a way to set a successful path and route for me. There may be times when I don't listen to her lectures and pointers because I feel that it is irrelevant, but in the end, it is always her who has known the answer from the beginning. She is the one source I can turn to whenever I am in need of help, of something I can't do by myself. I'm very thankful for having my mom in my life. She has done so much for me in the short 15 years of my life. She has proven to me that she would do almost anything for me, and how much love and care she has for me. My mother truly deserves everything because of all she has done. Not only does she help me with everything, but she also helps the community by donating and volunteering for organizations such as the Homeless Coalition. Knowing my mom does so much for everyone is so inspirational because she has imprinted on so many people, and I'd like to do the same one day. Having a role model is definitely a way in helping one make the right decisions. That right person or thing helps you to know what is wrong from right and how to determine that. It truly is amazing how one person or thing can do so much effect on another person or thing, from simply words of wisdom to devoting a lot of one's time to another in helping. The thought of them being there for us when we need them is heartwarming. From the very beginning of my life, I did not know the right direction I was going to. I lived with my dad for a few years and thought I would be better off in the States. Tables turned, and it turned out that I was wrong. After I moved with my mom on Guam, I realized that my mom was always the one who really cared about me and always knew what was right for me. Some of my family members from the States never bothered writing me a message for my birthday or Christmas."
I thought it was a very special letter, and I'm just very grateful that she took the time. So, thank you for coming up and helping your brother finish this beautiful letter.
And again, these are the words coming through Savannah. "My mother, on the other hand, always sent me gifts of her love and called every day hoping to see me as soon as possible. I cried to her when things went wrong, and ever since then, my life has been way better than it was before. My mother is my compass, and she guides me to do good. She helps me through my path of obstacles to achieve my goal. Her love for her family refreshes me every time of inspiration. I look up to her and hope that there are plenty of other people just like her so others can experience the things that she has done for me. My mother is the very best, and I don't really know what I'd do without her. I hope this sums it all. My mother is beautiful inside and out. As her daughter who knows her very well, I can assure you that my mother can take on any responsibility, and she will deliver. I hope that you will consider her nomination. Respectfully yours, Savannah V. Garcia."
Sizos Massey. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Calvo, for sharing that. When the letter came in, I made a commitment to make sure, because she knew she couldn't be here today, to make sure that it was read. And it struck me the same way it struck you. So, thank you for sharing that. And it means a lot to me for you both to have read it on behalf of your stepdaughter. So, please proceed with yours if you want.
Yes, thank you.
And thank you for being the man you are. Appreciate it. It really shares the respect that you be here, you being here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Hafade, Madam Chairperson, and Senator Tony Ada. I recognize that my testimony supporting Shelley Calvo's nomination to the Guam Visitors Bureau Board of Directors may be viewed as strongly biased, as she is my wife. However, the reverse side of that argument is that my close relationship with Shelley provides me with that unique advantage to know her true attributes and weaknesses. Others will likely speak of her marketing and public relations acumen, which have been honed from close to 10 years' work experience at Silicon Valley's ThreeCom Corporation and Artsoft. Others may speak of her entrepreneurial spirit related to various business pursuits. I want you to know about how passionately she approaches the goals that she sets. Shelley is a workhorse who regularly works late into the early morning hours to meet her deadlines, fraternity in her magazine articles, or preparing for her meetings when she was chairwoman of the Guam Homeless Coalition, or president of the Capiseno Association, or any one of several other projects that she had on her agenda. Should Shelley be confirmed, the Guam Visitors Bureau will have the benefit of a human dynamo who is always in motion and ready and willing to apply her sharp, common sense intellect to tourism issues that may need a fresh perspective. Shelley tackled her role at the Guam Homeless Coalition with great energy and passion because she knew she had the opportunity to make a difference with the homeless situation. She helped bring to my attention and many other businesspeople the terrible plight of our homeless Guamanians. She is relentless in soliciting donations. As a group, we donated money and in-kind contributions, in-kind products such as t-shirts, toothpaste, toothbrushes, soap, haircuts, canned food, and other essentials at the annual event at the Tumoning Gym. She walked into the jungles and makeshift shelters for the annual homeless count, which paves the way for government funding to help the homeless. Shelley Calvo has a big heart and has the simple motivation of wanting to serve her community. I encourage you to approve her nomination as board member of the Guam Visitors Bureau. Sizos Massey.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it. Senator, do you have any questions? Thank you so very much. At this time, I will go ahead and excuse this panel, and I will go ahead and call the appointee up. And as she's making her... Thank you so much. I will disclose for the record that I am of a personal relation, I have a personal relationship, the Cavals are related to me, second degree of consanguinity, and Prima, thank you for that. That meant a lot.
May I say a word as well?
Sure. You're more than welcome.
Thank you. Again, this would be biased, but I can speak from just vouching for what Paul said of Shelley having a big heart. And as her sister, and as a dear friend, I see Shelley as the embodiment of creativity when she has innovative ideas and she just goes for it. And I am touched by how she has changed my brother's life, and the love and the creativity that she brings to the entire family. It is expressed in her cooking, in her creative ideas of all her theme parties, and she is just wonderful to be around. It's her presence and her strive for excellence. And I'm honored to speak on her behalf.
Thank you, Prima. And can you just take your full name for the record?
Sure. My name is Rena Calvo.
Thank you, Rena. Thank you, Prima. God bless you guys. And as Shelley makes her way up, I will also note for the record that we did receive recommendations of support from Dr. Anna Mendez also, Mr. Chris Wang in support, Alex Narcissio from sales director from Iconet, and Evelyn and Joey Agabao from Skybridge Guam also presented written testimony in her support. Mrs. Calvo, you may proceed. Please state your full name for the record, and if you're here to support your own nomination.
Hafade, good morning, Honorable Madam Chair of the Comedian Tourism Housing Municipal Affairs and Hagana Restoration and Redevelopment Authority, and Honorable Senator Tony Ada, good morning. I decided to write down my speech so I don't forget anything. Dear Madam Chair and Honorable Senators of the 33rd Guam Legislature, first, I would like to thank you for your precious time to review my nomination. I am deeply thankful for the opportunity to be considered to join the Board of Directors of Guam Visitors Bureau. I understand that the position is very important, and it entails a lot of sacrifice and dedication. I am here in front of you today to express my full desire to take on the task of providing assistance to the GVB Board. I am deeply honored, and I'm very excited to assist in propagating tourism for island Guam. Though I am of Philippine descent, Guam is my home, and I care deeply in providing for her people and the culture. I enjoy cooking Chamor cuisine and have taken Chamor language classes. In fact, I even married a Chamoro. I fully understand how important it is to showcase our island and culture to the world. And though I may not be an expert, I do promote Guam everywhere I go, and I invite people to come and see our beautiful island. Madam Chair, on your article PDN yesterday, May 12, you mentioned that Guam's tourism has come far and grown, that we have reached all across the globe. However, it is only through showcasing and promoting the unique Chamor culture that we can set Guam apart from other similar destinations. This is exactly how I feel. The uniqueness of the Chamor heritage and culture will bring people from all corners of the world to Guam to actually see it and to firsthand experience it. I also have your passion to move the cruise industry forward to a new level of tourism success to Guam. This is one area I believe not only Guam will benefit, but the whole of Micronesia. I have worked as a flight attendant in the past, which allowed me to visit many countries worldwide. I had been in many cruises and have seen many destinations around the world, and I can assure you that Guam is such a beautiful island, a paradise compared to many others. There is so much more we can do and offer. This is such a very exciting time for our tourism industry and our people in general. And because tourism is the driving force of Guam's economy, I would like to offer my time and my energy to help in keeping our economy strong and find ways to grow it even more. The growth of new businesses and expansion of existing businesses can mean more opportunity for our local residents to find more employment. In hindsight, this can affect our homeless population on Guam. The people who are down in luck can possibly find ways and opportunities to regain and improve their stature in life. I have deeply involved myself with Guam Homeless Coalition, offered my time, energy, and resources for a reason, to help improve the quality of life of individuals in need. Guam Visitors Bureau, our island's engine of growth, is another venue where I can involve myself and impact the lives of many people. I believe that I have the people's skills, energetic disposition, marketing background, and the business sense to fulfill the tasks and responsibilities of being a member of the GVB Board of Directors. I am involved in businesses and organizations that require vision, leadership, dedication, discipline, creativity, and a ready smile to tackle the odds. As a multiple business owner, I know firsthand the importance of selling a product, offering quality service, and maintaining good relationships, all important factors needed in promoting tourism. It will be my pleasure to join the GVB team of dedicated, talented, and dynamic people. I firmly believe that I can complement the team, as I am nothing but a hard-working individual who respects everyone's talents and contribution. I am a go-getter, but I am also careful not to overstep my boundaries. I have worked with all sorts of personalities from all walks of life and have delivered what was expected of me. With this, my dear honorable senators of the 33rd Guam Legislature, I would like to humbly ask for your approval of my nomination to be part of Guam Visitors Bureau Board of Directors. I also would like to take this opportunity to thank... I also would like to take this opportunity to thank all my friends and family who have submitted their written testimonials and have come today to speak on my behalf and to support my nomination. They are the driving force behind my desire to serve. Without my family's approval and understanding, I cannot share myself. So I thank them for understanding that my nomination gets approved, my contribution to the community will take away time from them. I'm so blessed for their understanding and support so that I may serve our people and the island of Guam. Undangkalusijus Massey.
Ren privet to Mrs. Cavill. Senator Ada, would you like to comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Cavill. Thank you for your accepting of the governor's nomination to the GBB Board. I think you're -- I was looking at your pack and all the activities that you're involved in. Do you think that any of the activities that you're currently involved in or your other or your businesses will prevent you from fulfilling your obligation as a board member to the GBB Board?
I believe not. For the past many years, I have involved myself in a lot of organizations, civic -- I offer my time and my energy to a lot of people. I help out, but it's just a matter of managing your time and how you -- I norm put my family first, but I always find time to help out others because I feel so blessed with my life. And I think the very best way to express my thankfulness for the blessings that I get is to actually help out and reach out and to return the blessings to other people.
That's great. That's good to know. And you know, I see that you're on the HRA Board and now going over to the GBB Board. You know, I think it just takes that round from Hagatna now to the island.
To the island.
To invite tourists over and, you know, showcase our island. Before, you were just showcasing Hagatna. Now, you're actually showcasing the island. But thank you for your acceptance of the nomination. I look forward to voting on your confirmation, and you have my full support.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I'd like to also welcome Senator Taigui and former Senator Isra and former Governor Cavill. It's nice to see them here. And oh, my goodness, that's right, and former Senator Blas. Thank you for being here this morning. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Ada. And first of all, please, Mrs. Cavill, please go back and tell your daughter thank you for such a beautiful letter. And I want to thank your husband, Paul, for sharing most of it, and your sister-in-law for finishing that letter. When I read that letter, it really struck me with the appreciation of how we may not see a lot from our children's eyes, but for the mere taking of the time to write this letter, to share to the people of Guam how much you mean to her, but more importantly, for asking us that she wants you to share your time, a part of her time, with the island of Guam. It couldn't have come at a better time. And I just want to say the appreciation of family accepting and supporting your efforts to help our island of Guam, that means a lot. And if there was one question that I always ask the appointees, if they could share a vision or a highlight of what they want to do, the mere fact that I am very biased and I am passionate about moving this cruise industry forward, and as you see, I'm patting my good colleague here, I think that moving this cruise industry and Guam really jumping or climbing aboard the bandwagon or that boat that needs, that ship that needs to roar for Guam, I want to say that that was the best music to my ears, hearing you talk about wanting to share that same passion that I have. And I'm going to hold you to that commitment because I think it's that important. I've been speaking about this issue for the last several years, and I can see some in the audience shake their head and nod with a smile, saying, yep, you've been pushing that, and I'm not going to stop. And if there's one thing that I'm looking at is to making sure that we find new resources and new opportunities, job opportunities for our island, and this is one way of doing it. And also to thank you for your volunteer work. I know that Dr. Hattori spoke about your efforts and your drive, the passion that you and I talked about many years ago, and these guys didn't even know about how you truly wanted to work and make a difference for the homeless. That really brought to mind when that nomination came this way, saying, you know what, if there's a will for her, there's a way to help make a difference, I know you're going to do it from the heart. So I already disclosed for the record the relationship. Though you and I are not personally blood-related, I want to say to the listening audience and to all the ladies and gentlemen that are here, thank you very much, and you have my support.
Thank you so much.
God bless you, and there's nobody else to speak. I'm hoping I will get this nomination. I don't think there are any thing coming in. We will get it on the May agenda. So to the chairman of the board and the general manager, we will make it a point that her nomination be on the agenda, and hopefully, we will get a unanimous support for your nomination. Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you so much.
I know you're not going to get a lot of money, if not, not even that $50 stipend will help, but thank you so much again for volunteering. And like Senator Ada said, you worked with the Hagatna, you did a lot of the infrastructure and the blueprints there to move on, and now you're going to represent the island as a whole, showcasing Guam to the rest of the world, and I thank you for that volunteer work. Sijus Massey, sign the Massey, and God bless you on your journey.
Thank you.
With that being said, there's no more folks wishing to speak on this nomination. I will have called Mrs. Shelley Cavill's V. Cavill's nomination publicly heard. Again, if you want to share written testimony for both appointees to Mrs. Kraft and Mrs. Cavill, you can do so by sending it to senator@tina munia barnes.com or via fax simile through 472-3400. Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen, for being here. We do have two other bills on the agenda. I will excuse you now.
Thank you so much.
And to the family governor, Sijus Massey, for being here, to the Cavill family, thank you, and to all those in the audience who came to represent, thank you. You are excused. We do have two more bills on the agenda, Bill Number 82 and 83. And at this time, I will take it separately or together? Together? Two more testimonies for who?
Two-minute recess.
We're going to go ahead and take a one-minute recess just to regroup for the other two bills. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing, and Guam Preservation Trust has come back from recess. We have two more things on the agenda, Bill Number 82-33COR, which is an act to appropriate funds from the fiscal year 2014 fund balance of the tourist attraction fund for the payment of operational needs for the 2016 Festival of the Pacific Arts activities and payments to the employees of the government of Guam resulting from the enactment of Competitive Wage Act and to fund the balance due to law enforcement. Also, we will immediately receive testimony on Bill 83-33. It's an act to appropriate funds from fiscal year 2014 hotel occupancy hot surplus fund for the payment of capital needs of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority operation funding for Guam Visitors Bureau and funding requirements for the Hagatna Restoration and Redevelopment Authority. If I may, Dr. Lozama is here to testify on Bill 83. Am I right, Doc? On Bill 83. I do know that he has a very busy schedule. He will have written testimony. He's going to try and make it to stay, but if he can't, if he needs to run, I offered him to at least share his testimony first on 83 and stay as long as he can because in case he needs to get a call and goes out.
Yes, I asked some radiologists that are giving some of the support.
Okay, so will you be here for as long -- will you stay?
Well, we're all here, but I, you know, it's going to be soon as we can.
Okay. Okay, so then with that being said, I will go ahead and entertain both bills and see how and move it quickly. So if I may, Senator Blas, if it's all right with you, I'd like to yield and hear 83 first since I have the doctors and the radiologists here with Dr. Lozama, and that's okay with everybody here.
Thank you.
Senator Ada, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Dr. Lozama, you may proceed. I will ask everybody that's here to go ahead and state their name for the record, who they represent or where they're from, and if they support or do not support the bill. So at this time, Dr. Lozama.
Good morning, Senator Barnes and Senator Ada. Thank you for the opportunity to be before your committee on Bill 83-33. Guam Memorial Hospital certainly faces some financial challenges and other challenges that with a new hospital coming up soon would affect the way we deliver care to the people of Guam. Certainly, this bill addresses some of our concern with regards to upgrading our equipments at the hospital that will meet the needs of all the people of Guam as GMH stands and remains to be a community hospital for the whole community. The bill addresses the use of the surplus of the hotel occupancy tax to, in the amount of $1.6 million, for CAT scan purchase. Our CAT scan unit has been around for many years, and it has unfortunately gone through some major repair issues during this times. We have been down in providing this service for a significant amount of time that has impacted really patient care. So we've had some repairs over the past couple of years, and most significantly over the past couple of years, I think we've poured probably $500 to almost $1 million in repairing the current CT scan that we have. From my understanding, the current CT scan has met its lifespan in usage, and so certainly the breakdown of various parts of the equipment has affected the reliability of the equipment to remain operational for the services of Guam Memorial Hospital and its patients. So part of our capital needs that has been addressed has included getting a CAT scan unit. So certainly, the opportunity to purchase CAT scan unit that meets the needs of our patients is very much appreciated in, as written in this bill. I do want to point out too that we, I have hired three new radiologists at Guam Memorial Hospital. Guam Memorial Hospital is looking at hiring in-house staff support. And with that, we are expanding service and covering, you know, and offering better support for the needs of the community. So that at this point, at this point in time, we're focused on basically providing full support without necessarily risking sending patients out to the community for needs that we may not have. I have Dr. Santio to my right, who's an interventional radiologist, Dr. Miller to my left, who's also an interventional radiologist. The opportunities for new services, very exciting, senators. You know, I want to share this because it's really critical because two weeks prior to my doctors coming on island, we had a young person that suffered what they call a suparachnoid hemorrhage. That on Guam, prior to this last month or two, would have been a terminal event because it requires immediate transport to a facility that can do procedures to stop the bleeding. We were able to provide that service here in Guam through immediate, working with some affiliates in Hawaii to bring the equipment and provide that service here so the person has been going through rehab now. But I'm sure you've heard about aneurysm, bleedings. These services may be served, I mean, this illness is that unfortunately have suffered, that people of Guam have suffered through some catastrophic events and death, may be serviced in the going forward. With the upgrades in our CAT scan machine, I have my two radiologists that are experts who tell me that these services can now be supported at Guam Memorial Hospital so that our patients who are at this life-or-death situation can be helped. Many other procedures have been recently introduced at Guam Memorial Hospital. This have include basically non-surgical control of bleedings so that, you know, patients don't have to have major surgeries. We are looking at even doing some treatment of aneurysms, what they call endovascularly, which means no surgery involved. So the upgrade in a CAT scan would help support the service that really is, you know, the standard probably that this community, the standard that this community should be striving to achieve. And so with this bill helping us provide some resources to get an upgraded CAT scan unit, we are very grateful for the consideration that we can share with the, you know, the resources from the hot surplus. I did speak with you, Senator, about, you know, as we are introducing new service with the capability of the CAT scan unit that we're looking at purchasing, that we may also need new equipments, I mean, new supplies to support my three interventional radiologists that may now expand the, you know, service at Guam Memorial Hospital. I know that we're trying to stay away from, you know, using some of the resources for operation, but what I'm really asking for are new service support and what you can offer Guam Memorial Hospital as I have, you know, the physician support there. So with that, I close my --
Thank you, Dr. Lozama. I appreciate your testimony, and I'm looking at the legislation as introduced, and it talks about the authority to purchase the CAT scan machine. And I know that the request that you've just stated is looking at the additional service. Do you have a breakdown of the additional resources that are going to be needed or within the scope of the 1.6 that would suffice? Because if I'm hearing correctly, I am very appreciative of the addition to the people of Guam for the radiologist team that I see before me, but I'm wanting to make sure that if we're going to do it, let's do it right. And if we're going to purchase this, I mean, I can always work with the Oversight Chair on Health to look at the existing CAT scan and the other scan that we got from Naval Hospital and get the update of that, and that's for another day. But if the 1.6 million is to purchase this machine, are you looking for additional resources for the services? Or are you, do you have a breakdown of what you're going to need in as far as supplies so that we can be able to better detail it? And I do know that I have the folks from DOA here that can help me with the numbers, but I want to make sure that I don't misstep anything based on what the breakdown is.
Yeah, the CAT scan is, you know, what this bill addresses.
Right.
The CAT scan that we're looking at will offer new opportunities and new services that, you know, I am bringing before, you know, this body for consideration to -- that, you know, I am bringing before, you know, this body for consideration to, you know, include looking into, yes, assisting GMH in purchasing the, this new services supplies and so that my doctors can offer it.
And what I'll do, Dr. Lozama, is I'll go ahead and work closely with you and ask committee staff to delineate in further detail how we can accomplish that, so that when we get this legislation on the floor, that we're not mixing apples and oranges and that we're talking about the specific supply and services. So I just wanted to make sure that I stated that for the record.
Right, and we will be submitting those new services that we are hoping to provide, again, with the new CAT scan upgrade.
Yeah.
And if I may, Senator, may I?
Yes, I will, at this time, and in no particular order. I guess I'll just start with my right or whoever's senior, whoever you want, Doc.
Thank you. I definitely am the senior. My name is Mark Miller.
Go ahead and speak into the mic, Doc.
Yeah, sorry. I have to move stuff. My name is Mark Miller and recently arrived to Guam, but I have been here before, so I'm looking very much forward to participating in the expansion of the department and its services. There have been two revolutions in CT scanners since the one that was installed has occurred in the interim. The scanners now can basically look at a person and in one second scan from the head to the bottom of the abdomen, in one second, and that never was possible before. And the new services that that unleashes is that you now can see things that can be treated that require, excuse me, interventional radiologists, for example. My brother went to the University of Pittsburgh on December 23rd, and he died December 24th. He was sent out from the hospital because his, he had chest pain. That's one of the most common complaints you get in an ER in our district care, and they did the tests, the enzymes or whatever they test for normally, and they were negative. With this scanner, you can actually see the coronary arteries, because at the University of Pittsburgh, they would have had to call the cardiologist in, they would have decided to do an angiogram. It's, you know, a thousands-of-dollar decision, and because they didn't have a machine with these kind of capabilities, he didn't get a crucial test because it's a big step to go forward. And this machine will actually show the coronary arteries, and somebody who has coronary artery disease can be evaluated just for chest pain, which is the most common, probably one of the most common complaints that people come to an emergency room. So it's, this machine is not like the CT we have now. It's a totally different animal. It has so much more capacity. Also, for diabetic people, you can see the runoff. You can actually do an angiogram of their leg without actually doing anything with a catheter. It's all done by the machine because it's so fast. And it's like, it's really a new world of medicine compared to what we have now, and I couldn't be more emphatic about saying, for your own health, it's a good thing to have around.
Thank you. Please.
Good morning. Excuse me. Good morning, Senators. Dr. Santill Planes, I'm an interventional radiologist, started at the hospital in February, and, excuse me, I just ran out of procedure. So as Dr. Lozama and Dr. Miller was alluding to, I mean, the scanner is going to be very useful for, you know, advancing, not just supporting what we currently have, but advancing, you know, the realm of what we could do in radiology. One by, you know, as Dr. Miller was saying, for cardiac reasons, I mean, cardiac angiogram without actually putting in the catheter, but CT angiogram for the heart, and it can pick up, you know, diseases of the coronary arteries and not just the arteries, but even the, you know, other parts of the heart, non-invasively, just on the scanner. And based on those findings, it could, you know, one, help triaging the patient either to requiring a procedure, cardiac catheterization, where cardiologists can go and, you know, fix, put a stent and fix the blockage, or avoiding unnecessary procedures as well in patients where clinically or based on blood tests that they think the patient might have, might need a procedure, but on the CAT scan, if the findings are negative, then the patients can be spared of unnecessary procedures. So it could be helpful, you know, both ways. Aside from cardiac reasons, you know, as Dr. Miller was saying, peripheral angiogram, where, you know, if somebody's having issues in blood vessels in the lower extremities or somebody bleeding in their bowel, you know, we get quite a few patients coming to the hospital with gastrointestinal bleeding, and this CAT scan is going to, you know, pick up those bleeds and, again, will help us, you know, me being an interventional radiologist, that would help me to go and put in a material that can stop the bleeding without any surgery. So it's minimally invasive, and it helps the hospital save a lot of, you know, money in the long run, because these patients can get discharged sooner, and also avoid major surgery, which is one, increases the cost, and also, you know, patients have to stay in the hospital much longer with surgery. So this is all pushing towards minimally invasive, you know, treatments, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you care to speak? My name is Tom Greening, and I'm the manager of the radiology department, and the CAT scanner that we got from Navy and installed is called a 16-slice CAT scanner. Our main workhorse right now is a 64-slice CAT scanner, and the life expectancy of any radiation-producing machine is five to six years, seven max. Our 64-slice is pushing 10 years, and in the past two years, we've spent almost a half a million dollars putting parts into it. That's why they recommend that you trade them out and put in new ones every five to six years. With the 256 scanner, we can do, one second, we'll do a whole brain scan. Dr. Lozama wants to expand radiology services. He wants to do stroke protocols. In a stroke situation, if one of your loved ones come in, we have what's called a golden hour to fix them. And so by having this type of a CAT scanner in place, basically in one second, I've scanned the whole brain, and within 10 minutes, the ER doc has their answer. And by being able to scan in one second, we basically do the cardiac studies, we call it's like freezing the heart. So I know the cardiologists are going to be real excited about it. We're doing things now at GMH that we couldn't even do two years ago, but in expanding services. We have these specialized radiologists, it's a specialized area of radiology, interventional. We have to have more supplies. We have to have catheters, guide wires, stints. We help out the heart project, the cardiologists from Modesto when they come. We have to special order supplies for that. We would like to do more than what we're doing now. We would like to be able to do MRI again, nuclear medicine again, and myomography again. That all takes money, but with the 256 and the expansion of all the other services, I think we can offer services that's going to help save a lot of lives with the people on this island. As Senator Cruz mentioned not too long ago at the hospital, that he's getting to the agent stage where he knows him and his friends are going to need our services, and we'll be there for you, but we need your help. We need some more money, and we need some more equipment to take care of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
And, you know, as Tom was alluding to, I mean, we are planning, Dr. Miller and I, for intervention services, expanding newer procedures, which have, to my knowledge, never been done on the island for liver diseases, liver tumors, and, you know, cirrhosis, and, you know, these procedures are pushing the limits and helping, is going to help the patients immensely. From what I hear, the demographics, there's a lot of liver disease on the island from whatever reason, and these procedures, like, you know, for example, chemoembolization for the liver tumor or TIPS procedure, I mean, these are going to help the population immensely, and CAT scanner, this CAT scan, you know, is going to help in deciding on which patients can undergo, you know, those kind of things to help with it. And as Tom was saying, I mean, obviously, we also need supplies for the intervention procedure, catheters, wires. You know, currently, with minimal surprise, that we are actually able to do quite a bit of work, but, you know, I'm just envisioning expanding the services to include, you know, whatever procedures that have never been done on the island and to really help the population here, so, thank you.
Senator Ada, you have any questions for this panel? If not, I'd like to thank you, Dr. Lozama, and to the panel members here for speaking on behalf of Bill 83. We do have a long, several others who would like to share their either support or opposition to this, so I'll go ahead and excuse you at this time. You have a good day, and I will ask you to stay as long as you can, but if you have to leave, you're more than, you're more than welcome to step up. Sisus masi. Thank you. At this time, we also have four Bill 83. John Nathan Denight of General Manager, GBB, Mr. Alfred Israel for Bill 83, and Mr. Cameron for Bill 83. For Bill 83, first, we have not spoken on 82. Mr. Denight, do you wish to speak, or Mr. Blas, do you wish to speak on 83? Mr. Blas? Now, just, Mr. Baljak, would you, do you care to speak? Just have a seat, and we'll have you turn in. I will go ahead and start on my left and start with Mr. Chair, and we'll work down.
Madam Chair and Senator Ada, thank you so much for allowing us to testify here today. Our general manager, Nate Denight, will give a more detailed testimony. I just wanted to take one minute and to first thank the legislature and the administration for their continued support of tourism, and just wanted to mention, both for Bills 83 and 82, it's sort of the same message from our perspective as a board. The board's very proud that we've been able, through the community's efforts and our efforts with Tourism 2020 Plan, to rather substantially raise the TAF from $24 million to $36 million in a couple-year period of time. And, you know, as always, when these kinds of bills come forward, a couple of years ago, it was GCC, and now it's the hospital and the police overtime and so forth. The board is sometimes a little hesitant, because we really view the TAF as tourism-related. However, I have to say, in my tenure as the chairman, I've come to recognize that it's really important that the community receives the benefit from tourism as well. It's for our mutual long-term benefit, and I think the board is very proud that through its efforts and through tourism's growth, that we can do things such as provide, you know, needed community services that really benefit the community. And so we're here to support, as GBB, we're here to support this bill fully. And the only thing I'd like to just say for the record is, GBB will be coming forward in the near future with its budget and also with a proposal for a capital reinvestment plan for Tumon, which hasn't had tourism or hasn't had reinvestment for nearly 20 years. And as we continue to push forward on raising the quality of Guam so we can continue to grow the TAF, and we can continue to grow the economy so that the community can continue to benefit, we really, in advance, appreciate your support for the budget that GBB needs for its operations and for the needed capital improvements down in Tumon to continue forward so we can keep growing the TAF further and continue to keep benefiting the community in ways such as this. So we're supportive of the bill, and we appreciate your support of us. I guess it's a mutual, mutual thing. That's primarily what I have to say. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Denight?
Madam Chair, before I speak, I just want to recognize our longtime receptionist at GBB, Ms. Emily Canata, was admitted to GMH early this morning, so our thoughts and prayers are with her. She's more than 20 years at the Bureau, and I hope that Dr. Lozama and his team will take care of Emily Canata. Hafedain, chairperson, Barnes, and members of the community on municipal affairs, tourism, housing, and historic preservation. On behalf of GBB's Board of Directors, thank you very much for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 83-33. Regarding the provision 2A of the bill, GBB is supportive. The GMH provides for medical needs of the visitor community as needed, and GBB thanks them for their services that they provide. It is important that GMH have the tools and the resources that they need to continue meeting those needs for both our local residents and visitors alike. Regarding provisions in 2B and 2C of the bill, GBB is again supportive. Part of the GBB's Tourism 2020 Plan is to promote tourism outside Tumon. Funding capital improvement projects and opportunities for additional attractions and events to be enjoyed by the local community and visitor community alike will greatly assist in achieving this goal. Appropriations in these sections specifically for the Peace Festival, which is held in our capital city, and the Haganya Restoration and Redevelopment Authority are in line with this vision and plan. Madam Speaker was just with us, and GBB just returned from our meeting at the PATA, Pacific Asian Travel Association's annual summit in China. At the summit, GBB was featured and announced as the host for the 2016 PATA Annual Summit. The summit brings together tourism leaders from around the globe to discuss world travel trends and tourism sustainability. Moreover, it was announced that Dr. Rifi, the Secretary General of the United Nations' World Tourism Organization, basically the pope of tourism in the world, will be on island to attend the summit for the first time. This is a great honor and opportunity to feature our island on the world stage as a global leader in travel and tourism. Additionally, the meetings, incentives, conferences, and exhibits market, or the MICE market, is a key segment for Guam's tourism industry, and hosting a summit of this stature will demonstrate our ability to host large conferences on Guam. For this reason, GBB fully supports the provision for funding to assist with the planning and execution of this major event, the PATA Annual Summit. It will drum up excitement as we lead into the festivities for the Festival of the Pacific Over the last couple of years, GBB has expanded its mission and evolving from being a destination marketing organization to a destination marketing and development organization. This includes the undertaking of beautification projects, cleaning and maintaining roads, streetlight repairs, sidewalk enhancement, graffiti removal, landscape maintenance, visitor safety projects, beach cleaning, park maintenance, just to name a few. Our board, management, and staff is working on a comprehensive plan to improve our tourism district, which, as our chairman said, has been more than almost 20 years of improvements, and other key tourism infrastructure developments throughout the island. This plan will be presented to the governor and legislature once completed. As Guam's largest economic contributor, we believe that reinvesting in the island's tourism product will bring about greater opportunities for all the people of Guam. Therefore, we ask for your support for this forthcoming plan and as well as GBB's FY 2016 budget request. Again, Dr. Luna Sisus Masi, for your participation, I mean, your partnership in GBB's mission and for allowing us to submit this testimony. Thank you very much.
Senator Israel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I come here with a very heavy heart. My name is Alfred Israel, and I'm a resident of Tumon, and I've been a resident of Guam for the last 64 years, since 1951. My credentials and experience, I built the first hotel in Tumon, the Fujita Hotel, in 1968. I've been involved in other hotels, ventures, and to name a few, the Hilton Hotel, ownership of the Outrigga Hotel, the Dusitani Hotel, the Ocean View Hotel, and the Bayview Hotel. Tourism and tourism revenues and employments account for 60% of the economic activity and revenues of our island. Tourism and its related activities is a driving force in this island at the present time. It is the goose that lays the golden egg. Instead of nurturing this economic miracle, it has become easy pickings for every idea that enters the bureaucratic mind. Our golden goose is literally and economically being plucked feather by feather, a slow process that will eventually kill our golden goose. goose. The results are already here. Arrivals from our best destination and our most lucrative destination is falling down. Other places are increasing, but it's a different market. These two bills, and I'm referring to Bill Number 82 and 83, and this testimony is against Bill 82 and 83, are literally eating the future seeds of our island's growth and prosperity. Economic sense dictates that we preserve our seedlings for the future planting and growth. These seeds belong to our children and our grandchildren, not to the present bureaucrats. And they should not be wasted on projects whose funds should really come from other sources. The Tourist Attraction Fund, the AAF, in its original state, as passed and enacted into law, said that tourism money should be devoted for tourism projects only. Not as a grab bag for every bureaucrat on the island. We have to sustain our diminishing Japanese market. We should encourage and promote more tourists from Taiwan, Hong Kong, China, Korea, and the Philippines. The Philippines is a big market that gladly come over here, but they're hampered by the American Embassy in Manila. But all of this takes money. When I see the beautiful ads in the world media, CNN, BBC, about destinations like Malaysia, Vanuatu, New Caledonia, Tahiti, Fiji, I wonder where are, where are our Guam ads in the international media? So please, I humbly ask and request that the funding of imaging equipment is not a requisite of the Tourist Attraction Fund. These equipment are already available in the commercial section in abundance. Why does Gov Guam want to compete with the private sector? It's a duplication of effort. Right next door to them, the Guam Radiology is in business at the Guam Medical Plaza, at a lower and cheaper cost than GMH could ever provide, as we know from past experience. The restoration of Hagania should come from bond proceeds. It hasn't been done so. The bond proceeds in the past have been used for operational, and that's wrong. It should be used for infrastructure, such as the restoration of Hagania. And the payment of salaries for overtime should come from operational revenues. I know I'm spitting against the wind and I'm bucking the common acknowledgement of what's done, but as we say in the Philippines, this is lutong makau. It's already done. It's a done deal. So any effort on our part would be futile, but I still like to voice my objection in the hopes that someday we'll preserve the seeds for our future, for the future of our children and our grandchildren. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Israel. Mr. Cameron?
My name is Joseph Arturo Cameron, Executive Director for Hagania Restoration and Redevelopment Authority. Before I read on, Madam Chair and the Honorable Senator Ada, thank you very much for having me here today. I can't help but really seriously agree with Uncle Al here that bond proceeds is a way to go in, even for Hagania Restoration. But I will say this much, though, that there was a law many years ago passed about Hagania Restoration and Redevelopment Authority getting income from certain developments of tax, development taxes in Hagania, but that has not opened up an avenue. A lot of that money was taken over to DOE. And in the absence of us not having our golden egg, we're reaching out to opportunities that may avail. And on that, I would like to say that it is unfortunate that the Hagania Restoration and Redevelopment Authority Board of Directors will not be able to really cement a very positive support, although I can only relate what has been discussed over the past months in our board meetings. This bill came to us short of notice of an opportunity, Madam Chair, sorry, that we don't have a board meeting until the end of this month, but we will fulfill the 10-day requirement from this date to actually turn in official support for the bill. Hagania Restoration had already prioritized, as I so stated, that we have mentioned over the many months or a couple of years or so, some of our funds becoming available to stimulate certain economic development opportunities within specified Hagania areas, particular concerns in Hagania. Additionally, since the year 2011, the Hagania and Restoration Authority has been in consultation with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers in Honolulu, the district, that is, on developing the Hagania River Basin. Since the 1945 Hagania River diversion and improper channeling to its present location and the 1976 imposition of the National Flood Insurance Program on Guam, low-lying areas, specifically the city of Hagania stagnated. The NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Program, made it difficult for residences and businesses to construct and stimulate any type of economic development due to higher construction and the annual flood insurance costs. Therefore, in order for the Hagania River channeling to occur, an updated hydraulic feasibility study be conducted to determine the best management practice, the course of action, and the funding necessary for the selected course of action. This will determine the funds required to design, ultimately channelize the river, and protect Hagania area from inland flooding, opening development opportunities in this rich historic district of Hagania. The Hagania Restoration and Redevelopment Authority Board of Commissioners have, through GIDA, contracted Matrix Design Group to provide for a Hagania master plan with options for providing sustainable development district plans. As such, the district plans are short-range, anywhere from five to six years, on a multi-topic plan that considers only a portion of the jurisdictions, such as the Hagania Capital and Cultural District, the Paseo Plan Development District, and the Hagania River District, and the Adalou Redevelopment Area, to just name a few. District plans are detailed plans that long-range general plans. These district plans guide specific implementing programs along with its funding recommendations for supportable, manageable growth, such as zoning ordinances, capital improvement, and economic development programs. These plans stimulate economic growth within the area and the, and certainly encourages rapid and orderly growth right here in the city of Hagania. Lastly, as part of the Hagania and Restoration Authority's restoration and redevelopment efforts to provide a sense of place, reinvigorating annual activities that stimulate cultural, social, and economic benefits to Guam and the city of Hagania would serve as an incentive for investment and Renaissance opportunities. Therefore, the tentative list below provides for the priority projects that Hagania Restoration Authority recommends using the funds from the fiscal year 2014 surplus of the wholesale occupancy tax. Next week, on May 20th, on our regular meeting, Madam Chair, the Board of Commissioners will formalize its support on Bill 3233 and provide an approval resolution to this esteemed body. I've provided five, five total priority projects, which you already have on your hands. And again, the Hagania Restoration thanks the authors of Bill 8333 and this esteemed committee for support of the development of Hagania, our capital city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? I'd like to thank the panel for being here. I do know that there may be a couple. I'd go ahead and excuse you at this time. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on Bill 83? If not, gentlemen, thank you so very much. We will quickly proceed to Bill 82. And Senator, you spoke on both 82 and 83. Yes, I will go ahead and submit that. If you can send a copy to our committee staff so that we can append it to both Bills 82 and 83. If you can give us a copy, it'd be easier for us. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. For Bill 82, I have with us to speak is the chairperson from Kaha, Mrs. Monica Guzman, DOA Director, Mr. Anthony Blas, and also the Chair. Will you sit on this one also?
Madam Chair, I can, if you'd like. I just want to kind of apply to both, but if you'd like me to stand.
Yeah, I, go ahead and I have you sit. Yeah. Just to go ahead and sit, and then if you need to add, I will open it to you. If not, I'll take testimonies from the three. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate your patience and your time. Bill Number 82, ladies and gentlemen, is An Act to Appropriate Funds from the Fiscal Year 2014 Fund Balance of the Tourist Attraction Fund for the Payment of the Operational Needs of the 2016 Festival of the Pacific Arts Activities, Payments to the Employees of Government of Guam Resulting from the Enactment of the CWA, the Competitive Wage Act, and to fund the balance of payments due to law enforcement officers. The, you guys are all listed, both from the government and from the public corporation. If I may, just to give, give a history, I'd like to ask your permission. I will yield to Senator Tony Blas so he can give us a perspective from the Department of Administration side. So, Mr. Senator Blas, could you please proceed?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Senator Ada. Dr. Sisus Masi, I've given this opportunity to comment on Bill 82-33. An Act to Appropriate Funds from the 2014 Fund Balance of the Tourist Attraction Fund for the Payment of Operational Needs of the 2016 Festival of Pacific Art Activities, and payments to the government of Guam resulting from, from the, to fund the balance of, due to the law enforcement officers. So, Madam Chair, I was going to ask you to, to ask to remove the competitive wage, I guess that's not the issue before us, is only, only to pay the outstanding balances for, for the law enforcement officers, for DOC and GPD, for overtime and other personal needs, like any court judgments that are coming very soon. There's a hearing on Friday, I believe, for, for one of those issues that, that.
When you say hearing, is that a public hearing, a court hearing?
A court hearing.
A court hearing.
Just to verify the, the 43 hours for law enforcement officials.
So noted, Senator Blas, and we'll make the appropriate amendments to that to concur with the statement from DOA.
That's right. And, and the bill proposes to appropriate the funds for the fiscal 2014 Fund Balance, for the Tourist Attraction Fund, for the Payment of Operational Needs of the 2016 Festival of Pacific Art Activities FestPAC, and to fund the overtime and other personal expenditures due to the law enforcement officers. And the following illustrates the funding source of the proposed operations. The fund source is fiscal 2014 Fund Balance of the TAF, Tourist Attraction Fund. The, I guess, the 800, 800, 787 is the fiscal 2014 audited TAF Fund Balance. And of course, the other numbers that were, that were also included in the spreadsheet that I gave to you, Madam Chair and Senator Ada, the, the, there's a number of months that comes out to the final balance that's available for appropriation for a total of $4 million, the total fund available for appropriations. And we're also proposing the appropriations, $2 million for the Festival of Pacific Arts, 1.201081, 011, the overtime for GPD, and 798989 overtime for DOC, for the total of $4 million for the total appropriation. And DOA is in support of Bill 82-33 as it looks to proactively approve funding to assist the operational needs of the 2016 FestPAC, and at the same time, address any overtime and other personal payments that are needed. We believe that this bill takes the initiative to ensure that appropriations are made to fund all activities and payments listed above, but also goes forward to further identifying appropriate funding source for these items. With the appropriations that are proposed in this bill, should it become law, we'll move forward towards addressing any impact that may come out for overtime and other personal expenses for GPD and DOC due for law enforcement officers. Should this bill become law, we'll find an avenue for funding source to expedite the payment for overtime and other personal expenses for GPD and DOC. Dr. Sisus Masi, and Sir Menti, Madam Chair and Senator Ada.
Mindful that, Senator Blas. At this time, I'd go ahead and ask GBB to go ahead and statement, and then I'll have the Chair close.
Thank you again, Madam Chair and Honorable Senator Ada. On behalf of GBB's Board of Directors, thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 82-33. In 2016, Guam will have the honor of hosting the largest cultural celebration in the Pacific. The Festival of the Pacific Arts brings together artisans and cultural practitioners from around the world for sharing of cultural traditions unique to our peoples. It is an educational platform and venue for promoting and preserving the cultures of the Pacific. GBB is actively promoting this event overseas and anticipates thousands of visitors to come to Guam to experience the Olympics of Pacific Island cultures. For this reason, GBB fully supports the provision to provide funds for FestPAC 2016. Regarding Section 2B of the bill, GBB supports initiatives that increase the safety of our community and visitors. And we thank Governor Cavill and senators for making public safety a priority. This is vital and of great importance to our community and to GBB's efforts of promoting our island as a safe and satisfying destination. Once again, over the last couple of years, GBB has been expanding its mission and evolving, involving from being a marketing organization to a destination marketing and development organization. This includes undertaking of beautification projects, cleaning and maintaining roads, sidewalks, streetlights, graffiti removal, landscape maintenance, visitor safety, security, beach cleaning, park maintenance, cameras, and other projects. Our board management and staff is working on a comprehensive plan to improve our tourism district and other key tourism infrastructure project, infrastructure throughout the island. This plan will be presented to the Governor and legislation, legislator once completed. As Guam's largest economic contributor, we believe that reinvesting in the island's tourism product will bring about, bring about greater opportunities for our people. Therefore, we ask for your continued support for this forthcoming plan and GBB's FY 2016 budget request. Again, Sisus Masi for your partnership, and thank you for allowing to submit this testimony.
Sisus Masi, Mr. Denight. Chairman Guzman?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Senator Ada. I'm Monica Guzman, Chairperson for the Guam Council of Arts and Humanities, and I am here today to support Bill Number 82. As you know, hosting the Festival of Pacific Arts in Guam is going to be a massive effort that's going to require the entire island. Over the last few years, we've had hundreds of volunteers who have been meeting to plan and coordinate the programming portion of the festival. Through funds from the Tourist Attraction Fund, we've also been able to host many capacity building workshops in partnership with the Guam Visitors Bureau and Kaha, and these have been beneficial to our artists and our cultural practitioners. This year alone, we're going to have five different workshops. Last year, we had four. The year before that, we had three. What we're doing also for hosting the Guam, the Festival of Pacific Arts in 2016 is, as part of the Guam delegation, we are including 115 delegates from our diaspora in as part of the Guam delegation, we are including 115 delegates from our diaspora in the states, and we have a committee in California and spread over the continental U.S. that are doing outreach to ensure that we reach as many of our artists and cultural practitioners that are living overseas. We feel that this is a very unique opportunity to bring our diaspora home, to participate in this because we are one Chamorro people. I understand the concerns raised by a previous speaker, but what the Festival of Pacific Arts will bring to Guam is it will, it’s a format and a venue to really bring together our artists and our cultural practitioners together to enhance what is so unique about Guam. And what is unique about Guam is what the Guam Visitors Bureau will be able to market overseas to encourage more visitors to Guam, and that is our culture, our arts and our culture. And I’d like to thank the Guam Visitors Bureau for putting culture as one of their points, as one of their priorities in the 2020 Tourism Plan, and because of that and the partnership that GBB and Kaha has had over the years, we’re fully in support of this appropriation. And if I may, it says here on the bill that it’s for $2 million for a festival. If there’s any opportunity to increase that, maybe another million or so, we would really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Sisus Massey, Madam Chair, and bringing that to light for additional funding, maybe if you can just explain to the committee and to the listening audience out there, the whole, I guess, the invitation and what Guam did, not just this term, how many years ago did Guam seek to host this event? Who are we expecting? How many people? And what is the total bill for this that Guam will have to pay to run this or to host this, I guess, this very, very ginormous event to showcase Guam?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. In 2008, the governor, along with the Executive Director of Kaha, made a proposal and bid to host the festival in American Samoa. And at that time, the governor actually flew and attended the Council of Pacific Arts and Culture meeting to make the pitch to host the festival here. There will be 27 Pacific Island countries and territories that have been invited to participate. Governor Cavill sent the letter of invitation out to all of these countries in March. We anticipate all of them coming to Guam from as far away as Easter Island, down south to Papua New Guinea and Palau. It’ll be a two-week festival, May 22 to June 4, 2016. We estimate approximately 2,500 delegates will be coming to Guam, which we will host, accommodate, and feed for the two-week period. And we estimate initial budget estimates are $13 million to successfully put this, host the festival. Of that $13 million, we anticipate $2 million to be raised privately, $5 million government appropriation, and the $7 million balance or $6 million balance will be mostly in-kind products and services. So, I know that the festival director now, Rose Ramsey, is digging, I mean, looking into the details of the budgets and trying to fine-tune that a little bit more, but we estimate about $13 million. Hopefully, it won’t cost that much.
But we need to secure the $13 million?
In cash and in-kind, yes.
And in-kind.
Yes. Our corporate community, our business community have been very supportive of this effort in reaching out to them. They have come forth, but there’s still more that needs to be done in the next year. It’s probably 390-some days before opening ceremonies.
And the chairman of the event is?
Yours truly, Mr. Nathan Denait, is the Chairperson for the Festival of Pacific Arts, Coordinating Committee.
Mr. Denait, would you like to add to that? Or Mr. Chair?
As the newly-appointed Chairperson of the Organizing Committee, I would just like to say about Festival of the Pacific Arts, one of the real benefits I see is our local community, all the artisans and cultural practitioners are preparing for this major event. So, for the last four years, we prepared for the 2012 Festival of the Pacific Arts in Solomon Islands, but since then, our people have been preparing from all the different disciplines, from the dancing and performing arts to the craftspeople, carvers, weavers. But what this is really doing is building our cultural plant factory where people are really going back and looking at ancient traditions that haven’t been necessarily promoted or practiced. A good example, I know Joe Canata and Ruby Santos, they are working on the Bill about tutzen, and they are, have recruited about 100 people to participate and learn the instrument. So, these are people from all walks of life, not just Chamoros, but young people, elderly, native Chamoros, and, you know, Halleys. Everyone is trying to learn this instrument. So, I’m looking forward to the opening ceremony and seeing them, 100 people, perform an instrument that is very cultural and we see hanging on the walls at many places, but you never get to see anyone play it. So, these are, I think, are things that are important, and because everyone is practicing and getting better and working on these traditions, there’s going to be more knowledge spread to the community, which means that they’ll be able to offer these traditions and practices to our local community, but our visitor as well. So, we’ll just have more people practicing our culture, encouraging them to practice a culture, leading up to this major event. So, it’s kind of like, you know, when you have the Olympics, all the teams, so Japan, everyone there, the swimming team, all the different teams, because in 2020, they’ll host the Olympics, they want to have a good showing, so they’re all practicing. Everyone’s working hard to have a good showing as the host country. So, Guam is, the FestPAC is that same initiative where culture is at the top of everyone’s mind. For example, our master blacksmith, Frank Lozama, I’m very good friends with his son, and he cuts my hair, but, you know, I went over to his house, and they have about 30 people coming three times a week, young people, elderly people from all different walks of life, learning how to blacksmith. And, you know, with the passing of our, of the master blacksmith, Mr. Liu Han, you know, it’s important to see these traditions passed on from generation to generation, or else they get lost. So, I think that’s a real importance, and having this event here is getting really, everyone excited and ready for the event is going to be one of the real long-lasting effects. So, even after the festival, because the festival is two weeks, but I think the effects afterwards is that’s where we’re going to see real benefits. And speaking from the tourism aspect, we’ve been promoting this event for the last four years. We have the flyer and different promotional materials online, you know, translated into eight different languages, including Russian. So, we’re expecting to see those visitors come and experience our Guam culture and then all the other cultures of the Pacific. And the other major event is all the PR, the public relations and the media exposure. So, hosting these major events like the Olympics, the real benefit is all the PR, all the media focused and attention on Guam because of us hosting this major event. So, I think it’s going to really solidify our position as the hub of Micronesia and a great opportunity for our Micronesian brothers and sisters. Many of them couldn’t afford to go to the Solomon Islands because of the cost. And so, CNMI is asking for even sending another extra 100 from what they’re allotted, an extra 100 delegates. So, just really building up our Micronesia cultural and supporting our other islands and giving them the opportunity to participate in FestPAC is a real benefit. And then, you know, showcasing Guam against our other island brothers and sisters, but it’s still a friendly competition against Hawaii and Samoa and Tahiti, you know, they’re brothers and sisters, but on the tourism, they’re a competing destination. So, I’d like to invite them to my, you know, our hometown and show them our culture and kind of, you know, show off a little bit what we can do right here on Guam and expose our culture and put it up against all these other Pacific Island cultures, which are quite frankly more well-known than our culture, you know? So, it’s just a great opportunity. I guess I keep rambling, so you can tell how passionate I am about the event. And so thankful for Monica and Senator, Madam Speaker, and the Speaker and Vice Speaker Cruz, and Governor Cavill, and everyone who’s been involved in promoting this event for many years, because this is 2008, that’s going to be eight years in the planning and making, so you can see how major this event is, and the private community for supporting the event. And I think it’s really showcasing, and you could see the amount of resources we’re putting into it, but that really showcases how serious and committed we are to promoting the Chamorro culture. So, thank you very much for allowing me to speak a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Denait. I do want to note that you did hit a solid button there and talked about the Olympics and how this is the Olympics of the arts and culture and traditions, and how the similarities in the traditions and being able to collaborate and share that. Madam Chair, I’d like to ask you, Madam Chairwoman for Kaha, of the 27 country nations that will be here, you noted that there are 2,700 delegates, right?
Approximately 2,500 to 3,000.
Delegates.
Yes.
So, how many additional tourists or followers of this Festival of the Arts bring from around the world? How many additional tourists or participants that would be watching the shows or how many of them would come to this attraction or what’s being followed?
Well, previous festivals, they have said that there’s as many as 10,000 additional people that go to the festivals. You’re talking family, friends. And over the last four years, just on the festival website, there’s been inquiries from as far away as Peru, from Germany, from Europe, of course, all over the United States, people, and through the South Pacific also, people going onto the website and saying they want to come to Guam. What hotel can we, you know, where can we stay? Where are your venues? And so, of course, all of those requests, we’ve been forwarding to the Guam Visitors Bureau. I’d like to just add, Madam Chair, that this week, we have two visitors from the Secretaryate of the Pacific Community that are here to meet with the different committees this afternoon. They will be attending the FestPAC Coordinating Committee meeting at 2:00. Over the week, they’ve been meeting with our various programming subcommittees, and, you know, they were, they had scheduled to come here because of the Guam Micronesia Island Fair as the kickoff, the countdown launch. Unfortunately, they will not be able to come back for the rescheduled date, but they’re here and they’re very excited. They’ve been doing the site tours and doing all of the courtesy calls that they need to do with our leadership, and they are impressed with what we’ve done so far. And I know that Nathan and the festival director, we’ve had a briefing with them this, yesterday? Yeah, so, you know, a lot of work has been done, and a lot more work will continue to be done over the next 12 months.
Thank you. And I know it’s fast approaching because you said it is from May 22 to June 4, 2016. Am I right?
Yes, ma’am.
Yes. One more question, if I may, and it’s a financial question, because I know that we’ve been talking numbers, and as you know, resources is the most vital thing in order to make a successful event, and you’re going to need the money to be able to host this ginormous event. And I want to say that you spoke about the $13 million figure, and I want to make sure that we’re right. I want to ask, how much do we have so far? I know that we have this pending bill. How much more are we going to need? Because it’s very crucial that, you talked about the private corporations and the vendors coming in to assist, but really, from the government’s perspective, how much more are we going to need? And if you talked about the readjustment from the festival director, how soon would that, those new solid numbers come in, because we’re fast approaching before the fiscal year and then for the event?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The revised budgets will probably be, I would imagine, that the festival director will complete it like in the next 30 to 60 days or 60 to 90 days.
I think we’re going to ask a little bit sooner because we have this bill on the agenda.
Okay, okay.
So, we need more than the $13 million.
I know, I know that in the trust account, Nathan, we probably have like 2.6 million?
2.6, that’s great.
2.6 in the trust account, and that’s how much we have. In the operations account at Kaha, there’s a little over, under $200,000. So, we’re still a long ways from our goal.
And I think the projected goal was 6 million total.
Yes.
So, if you just do some rough math.
Cash!
Cash, yeah. So, that’s four.
Yeah. I think Mr. Cameron has an added figure.
Notwithstanding the fact that we do have some generous donors from the private industry, Primo Yukan Stacy, we’re looking at, there were some payouts, cash payouts to Kaha over a period of time leading up to the festival. So, we’re looking at 3.1 million cash right now, notwithstanding any other monies that needs to come in.
Right, that would include the 1% set aside that we had from the arts to
No, that’ll be additional.
That’d be additional, okay.
Thank you for saying that.
So, we still need the cash from the government to host, and that is looking, the total is at 6 million cash.
Yes, ma’am.
And then the 7 million will be the income.
Yes, thank you. And so, the request to increase that appropriation from 2 to 3 would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, thank you.
Also, if I might add, we are 374 days, 12 hours, and 35 minutes till
Fast coming.
Yes.
So, Madam Chairperson for Kaha, truly appreciating to the panel members here, thank you very much. I, as Oversight Chair of Tourism, I find it very important to make sure that these two critical bills will try and get on the May agenda. I do know that the committee will look at the necessary substitutions and the numbers, the prerequisites that will be needed so that we have a full deliberation when we try to get it on the floor for the May session. So, our committee will be calling for the additional numbers to make sure. We thank you for being here today, and we know that this event is fast coming, and I do know that the resources that we have out there are tight, if not very, very, very scarce. And I know that Guam has an obligation to host these games, but also to preserve and to protect our community, and I knew, know that with the judgments that you’ve stated that some of these bills for law enforcement, as they continue to protect our community, have to be addressed. So, thank you very much. I have called this public hearing on the two appointees for Mrs. Kraft and Mrs. Cavill, and the two bills, Bill 82 and 83, publicly heard, and we adjourn this at 11:27 a.m. Sisus Massey, Sisus Onbini DC, and yes, Biba FestPAC, Senator Blas. Thank you.